We are now being recorded.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good afternoon, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the California State Bar. It is Friday, March 24th, just a few minutes after two o'clock, which is our appointed time. I will go ahead and call us to order since we have a quorum and ask the secretary to take the role, please.
Broughton, not present. Bueno Ventura?
Present.
Chen?
Present.
Cisneros?
Here.
Duran?
Present.
Good?
Here.
No?
Here.
Shelby, not present. Soal, not present. Stallings?
Present.
Tony?
Present.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Good afternoon again. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. This is a special meeting. We have three items on our agenda. The first, before we get to the first item, I will go ahead and make the call for public comment. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the Board of Trustees on an item of interest to you or on our agenda. You can indicate your desire to do so by using the raise hand function on the Zoom platform or star nine. I always forget star nine and star six, star nine. If you're calling on the phone, I see we have one raised hand so far. As is our custom, we will allow three minutes for public comment. I will also note for the record that the trustees have received, at least I believe, two emails from the staff transmitting written public comments that had been received prior to today's meeting. So, Madam Secretary, you can go ahead and allow folks in and then they'll have three minutes to address us.
Great. First speaker is Todd Hill.
Mr. Hill, welcome. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for the opportunity to speak today. I'll keep it brief. I, as you're aware, filed a case in Central Division Federal District Court of California. The case number is two colon two three dash CV dash zero one two nine eight dash JLS. That case number, again, I apologize for its length, is two colon two three dash CV dash zero one two nine eight dash JLS. It relates to issues pertaining to my school matriculating and then defrauding me and issues I've had in finding an appropriate solution with the state bar's assistance. I appreciate your attention to the matter. I invite the public to visit Pacer or some other area and take a look at the case. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. I do not believe there are any further raised hands. This will be a last call for public comment. And seeing none, we will move on to our agenda.
I apologize for the interruption. I'd just like to note for the record that Trustee Broughton is here.
Trustee Broughton, welcome. Thank you for joining us. Okay, item seven zero one is a discussion of the Board of Trustees regarding the Ad-Hoc Committee on Oversight and Accountability Reforms, recommendations from that committee. Good afternoon, Ms. Wilson and Ms. Dabtian. We are ready.
Yes, and I'm actually thinking, I know that trustee Soal couldn't join us today. We do have Hyland Chen who was on that committee, so I don't know Hyland. I didn't ask you in advance, but if you wanted to present these to the board or you want me to, go ahead and you jump in, whatever.
And why don't we do the latter because I hadn't prepared to present, but I'm happy to, you know, at the appropriate time, add some more detail and information and answer any questions.
Okay, so these are the first, this is the first set of recommendations that the Ad-Hoc Committee is bringing forward to the full board for consideration. And as a reminder, this committee was formed really to do the next step of or phase of work related to identification of reforms or improvements that could be made really in response to a number of issues raised by the Girardi review, file review, and then the May investigation report as well. And so you can see today, there's some broad categories for these reform initiatives that have been identified. One, I would call, first one, governance. This has to do with the board's role in overseeing the state bar as a whole and the discipline system specifically. So the first recommendation you see is to make permanent the structure we have in place for the first time this year, a two-year board chair. So there's some history provided in the agenda item, just showing that this idea of the need for continuity and leadership is one that has been brought up previously, certainly around the time of that transition or the pending transition of the state bar to a purely regulatory agency. The thought at that time, just to give a little context, was that every year when you change your leadership, you brought in a whole new set of initiatives for the state bar to focus on. And that was viewed as a model that was very sort of trade association-like, membership association-oriented, as opposed to regulatory where you want continuity and leadership so that you're not sort of changing direction every time you get a new leader. So that's kind of the first governance recommendation. And the next one has to do specifically with the really new structure that we put in place this year. Maybe it's not last year, but the establishment of the discipline liaison positions. First, those were established vis-à-vis the chief trial counsel only. Then we expanded that to include the special deputy trial counsel. So we now have four discipline liaisons. The recommendation is to institutionalize that. And we would do that, I think, via the board book and to create a term structure for those discipline liaisons effectively so they would stagger. So I will just pause there. Hyland, jump in if I left anything out and see if the board has any reaction to those two recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I see trustee Chen shaking her head.
I don't have anything to add to that, but happy to answer any questions or
Okay.
if you're any concerned.
Trustees, any questions? Before we engage in discussion, let me start with that. If there are any factual matters you want to clarify and a deeper dive on any of the underlying facts in the staff report, which I thought was very nicely laid out. And I thought I was going to see trustee Good hit her unmute button, but that was a psych. No questions? Okay, let's open the floor to discussion and deliberation. Trustee Stallings, please.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So yeah, so I think that the two-year term for chair is definitely an extension of the reforms that we put in place, and I think those reforms are really well laid out in the staff report. I, you know, I know that based on my conversations with you as far as the way so much of, you know, the chair and vice chair duties revolve around establishing relationships with various stakeholders. But I think this is something that that would be a good thing for the bar. So many of the the big initiatives that we are trying to relate to stakeholders and collaborate with them on require just that continuity of relationships. And so I think this is a good step towards continuing that work and continuing to rebuild the trust with the various stakeholders who have entrusted us with protecting California. So I support it.
Thank you, Brendan. Looking around the screen, don't see any other raised hands. I will step in just a little bit to say as the as the first guy who's actually had this opportunity to continue a second year as the chair, that it really has been helpful to my own service. And I believe and I hope that helpful for the board to sort of have a continuation of a year that can just go by very quickly. I think, you know, all of all of us, all of you have full lives with very active careers and whether whether lawyers or members of the public, there's a lot that each of us brings to this role and a year can go by in a flash. And so I've really appreciated this extra time to continue as the chair, working with the leadership among the Board of Trustees and our staff. So I wholeheartedly endorse that that change as well. The discipline liaison system, I think, is a another good step in a continuing evolution of what we're doing at the state bar, right? And the more active role that we have committed to the court and to the legislature as trustees to take in overseeing the discipline system. And it's a lot of work that a lot of people put in. We've talked endlessly now about the numbers of discipline cases that the chief trial counsel's office handles. And as trustees, I think that there are plenty of folks in the state who are expecting us to take that policy initiative role, that oversight role as seriously as we have been taking and to continue that. So I think that this alternating or staggered terms is a good, good idea for continuity as well. I think it's a great idea. So I really do appreciate all the work that the Ad-Hoc Committee has done. Trustee Chen, trustee Soal and the others, it's, you know, I know, I know it's a lot of extra hours that you put in, so it doesn't, it hasn't gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Great. If nothing more, maybe I'll go on to the next sort of set of recommendations, which at this time is one, it has to do with increasing oversight over the discipline system. I guess it's sort of corresponds with the discipline liaison term recommendation. But this is to create a new position that would report directly to the board with a responsibility for compliance, sort of ensuring compliance and accountability vis-à-vis the Office of the Chief Trial Counsel, the 20201 program and the Complaint Review Unit crew. So discipline complaint processing, I would call the scope of this position. And a very preliminary duty statement is laid out in Appendix B of the agenda item. Hopefully that gives the board a sense of what the responsibilities would be. I think in my own view, something that's really needed is somebody to staff and support the discipline liaisons in helping them to carry out their oversight responsibility and really the board writ large. Because it's a lot to stay on top of. And as, as you mentioned, Ruben, board members have other jobs and other lives, and so we need to help support and facilitate effective oversight of the system. So this position would obviously stop the discipline liaisons. But you can see here what what's outlined is really helping the board proactively identify risks, working with the leadership in each of those three areas to mitigate the risk, following up on audit recommendations, recommending proactive audit and review areas for audit and review. So this is new. It would be, I think, a significant change for the bar. I will note that there was some, there has been some discussion about, you know, different possible structures for this type of oversight. Some models and the board heard from the prison IG Inspector General and also the head of Ethics and Compliance for the UC system. Some models are internal to the system, and that's what this would be. Some external. And if we were going to go in that direction, this position would not, for example, report to the board. But this is where the Ad-Hoc Committee has landed for now. So I will open up her comment or again, Hyland, if you have anything to add.
Yeah, I would just add that it's been my experience as a discipline liaison that it really to to do the job effectively requires much more resources than we have currently. It really requires someone who has it as their full-time job. And while we have a very useful dashboard right now that we can reference and that both Mr. Cardona and Ms. Laguna are, you know, reporting on, it's very helpful. But there are so many items that have come out of the two Girardi-related reports that require reforms that we will need to oversee and monitor. And those include, for example, improving and strengthening our conflict processes. And many of that, much of that work is already underway and already implemented in OCTC. We need somebody who can be boots on the ground to make sure, how is that working? How effective is it? Do members of OCTC know about the rules, internalize them, can speak knowledgeably about them and can assess the effectiveness of the various changes we need to implement? So we think that this is a step in the right direction in making sure that we as discipline liaisons and the board writ large can exercise our duty appropriately.
Thank you, Hyland. Jose, your hand is up.
Thank you very much, Ruben. And thanks to the committee and everybody that's put this proposal together. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think, given everything we've been through, we've certainly seen how important this kind of oversight is going to be going forward and to make sure we don't have any repeats of the kinds of things we've seen. I just want, I just have a couple of follow-on questions, but I think I'm in full support of this. Leah, you talked about, obviously, this would be a new position and it likely would involve some staff reporting to that position in order to do a good job of their responsibilities. Do we have any kind of a cost estimate of what that would add to our budget, annual budget, that type of thing, just so we'd have an idea of that going, what we'd be looking at going forward? And that's my question number one. My question number two is, have we sounded this idea out with the legislature and the judicial council? Because of course, I'm imagining they'd be in support, but I'm wondering if we've had any conversations. That's it for me.
Okay, so what we talked about on the cost side was repurposing existing vacant positions, and we really only talked about two positions. The this, the director role and then a support position. I, you know, I think it's obvious more resources will be needed, but but this person or persons will obviously be able to tap into the resources, particularly of our research group. So they don't have to be completely self-isolated. So we talked about repurposing two vacant positions. It may be that that is not realistic, and so we would be talking about potentially two new positions. I can give you, you know, off the top of my head, that's probably four to $500,000 a year, depending on what what the positions are. And in terms of sounding the idea out, I think you meant the Supreme Court, not the judicial council, and we tentative, a very tentative set of discussions to that effect with the Supreme Court liaison, but not with the legislature. And so that's certainly something that would need to be done.
Thank you, Leah. Mark Tony, your hand is up.
Thank you. I I like this proposal a great deal and appreciate the work and thoughtfulness put into it to increase accountability and compliance. And I also appreciate Jose's recommendation that we look at what the cost is. And I think that that's just a good practice. The one thing that I would like to see included in this scope for this position, which speaks to compliance, is some sort of monitoring of the backlog of the process of processing complaints. And to help us get a better understanding of what are the mechanisms that are causing the delays? And what are some workflow stream, you know, is it, is it an issue of workflow issues that can be made more efficient? Or is it a lack of staffing that's causing it? Jose and I serve on the liaison to the Office of Chief Trial Counsel. We, you know, follow the reports, we meet quarterly, and I don't know the answers to those questions. And what I do know is that the backlog is increasing. And so in terms of this being a oversight and compliance position, I just think that would fit in. And boy, I'd like to see that included.
Okay.
Thank you, trustee Tony. Any other questions or commentary from the trustees? Seeing none, I'll just add that, again, I mean, I feel like I'm got the same drumbeat going on now, but that's, I think that's good, right? These are evolving tools. This is further evidence of the bar evolving and improving. So we've made a lot of we made a lot of strides recently, but there's still more work to do. So I think this is an important part. Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you to the Ad-Hoc Committee.
Okay. And then the last item, I will say, oh, go ahead, Hyland, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just saying, there's one more item.
Yeah. And as to wrap up this set, I will say the board should expect some things to be brought forward for action in May. So with that, I will turn it over to Aline, who's going to address the last piece of this agenda item, which is an update on enhancements to our whistleblower policy.
Thank you, Leah. Good afternoon, chair members of the board. The other important topic that was addressed by the Ad-Hoc Committee has to do with our processes and improvements and enhancements around the whistleblower and whistleblower retaliation complaints. The state bar has a current process in place in that our HR department would lead the investigations of any such complaints and retain outside investigator as appropriate. But however, the organization has recognized the need to improve in that space. And so in collaboration with, you know, Executive Director's Office and OGC and obviously with the discussions that occurred at the Ad-Hoc Committee, we are moving forward with more enhanced processing and handling of whistleblower complaints and retaliation complaints by our plans to contract with the California Department of Justice to handle and review those complaints for the organization. We've been in discussions with that agency already, where there's an approval internally from DOJ to move forward with that contract. Our plans are to bring this item forward to the board at its May meeting for review and consideration. However, as an interim step, the Ad-Hoc Committee and has sort of sanctioned an interim step and a process for handling complaints against individuals that directly report to the board. And that includes myself, the Office of, you know, General Counsel, as well as Executive Director and the Chief Trial Counsel. And so as a, as a as an interim step until this contracting and this process is implemented, any complaints against myself or Executive Director or the Chief Trial Counsel are directly routed to the chief, Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Audit Committee for oversight of investigation and with the help of an external investigator as needed. If a complaint, whoever is, you know, implicated in the complaint will be walled off and recused from the process to ensure that it is a fair and impartial review and appropriate actions are taken. A specific email address has been created to be able to, for employees to submit complaints. And that that has been conveyed and communicated to our workforce already. Individuals who have access to that email address that are on staff level have been provided specific instructions to forward those complaints to the Chair of the Board and the Chair of the Audit Committee with a specific, you know, reminder that that, you know, they're protected from retaliatory actions by the organization if in doing so. So those are some safeguards that have been put in place. Similarly, while not in written form, there is a process for handling complaints against board members. If a complaint is filed against a board member, that board member would be recused from any discussions relating to that, and the board would oversee any investigation that is necessary and take any appropriate actions. And the, and the board composition would exclude anyone that may have potential conflicts as to that individual. So that's a brief update. More to come to you in the, at the May meeting. Happy to answer any questions that I'm able to.
Thank you, Aline. Any questions for the General Counsel on this last piece? Comments from the trustees? Brendan?
Set a question just about a process and the process that's outlined in the agenda item, is it fairly consistent with agencies of our structure and makeup?
Are you talking about the interim process?
Yeah, the interim process and then I guess just the direction that we're going with retaining DOJ.
You know, once DOJ is contracted, it's more of like an interim step now, Brendan. And, you know, to have an ability to have an impartial review without any conflicted individuals as part of that. But once the contract is in place with DOJ, those would go directly, if it's a whistleblower complaint or whistleblower retaliation complaint, those will go directly for for review by that agency.
I guess, do other agencies kind of are, you know, similarly situated agencies, do they also contract with DOJ in this capacity?
So the state auditor, the office contracts, my understanding is that they contract with the DOJ for these similar services.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I will note that trustee Shelby has joined us. Good afternoon. Welcome. We are just getting to the, we just got to the third of the three reforms recommended by the Ad-Hoc Committee. And certainly welcome your comments on either of the first two or the third that you just got the last of. And seeing none, let me just confirm, this was information only, discussion only. Does the Ad-Hoc Committee or Ms. Wilson, do you want further direction from the board? I mean, I think I see a lot of nodding heads that this is, you know, this is a good direction to move in. Okay.
This is good.
All right. Wonderful. I think that is going to move us into closed session.
Yes.
So at this time, I will announce that the board will be convening in the closed session to discuss items 7,001 and 7,002 under the authority of Government Code Section 11126.2 with respect to the draft report by the California State Auditor and 11126 subsection C7 with respect to the sale and price in terms and leasing for the bar's property at 180 Howard Street. Trustees, I hope by now we've all received a link with a closed session information and we'll see you there. We will be coming out or I will be coming out after, after the closed session in case there's anything to report. So thank you for your patience. Bye-bye. there's anything to report. So thank you for your patience. Bye-bye.
Okay, we're now recording.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Thank you, everyone, for uh your patience. State bar uh board of trustees met in closed session pursuant to our posted agenda, considering, to consider each of the items that are on that agenda. Uh we received uh information and provided direction to staff with no reportable action. So that takes us to the conclusion of our meeting. Uh we are standing adjourned and hope everyone has a good weekend. Thank you.